The city of Bristol, providing beautiful parks, economic development, and a family-friendly community.
I'd like to welcome everyone to the monthly meeting of the Joint Board, the City Council, and the Board of Finance. For those of you who are able, please stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Would the members of the Joint Board please introduce themselves, starting on my far right?
Marie O'Brien, Board of Finance.
Scott Smith, Board of Finance.
Michael Moth, Board of Finance.
Orlando Kelfi, Board of Finance.
Peter Kelly, City Council.
Greg Hahn, City Council.
Mary Fortier, City Council.
Dave Proleski, City Council.
Dave Mills, City Council.
Jake Kerweiler, Board of Finance.
Ron Burns, Board of Finance.
Cheryl Tebow, Board of Finance.
And I'm Ellen Zapposasou, Mayor. The first item on our agenda is the approval of the minutes of the regular Joint Board meeting on August 15, 2018.
Move approval.
Are there a discussion or clarification needed on the minutes as presented? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. The next item is the Consent Calendar, and I'll defer that to our City Clerk.
Yes. Second.
Okay, is there a motion to approve the consent cal-- okay, the motion to waive the reading of the Consent Calendar? Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. And now the approval of the Consent Calendar, items 2A through M.
Motion to approve.
Discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Item three, to transfer $415,000 from the General Fund contingency account to the Board of Education operating budget for cost overruns as of June 30, 2018.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Discussion on the motion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Item four, to approve transfers totaling $1,162,718 within the General Fund to close out fiscal year 2017-2018.
Move approval.
Second.
Discussion on the motion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Item five, to approve carryovers from fiscal year 2017-2018 to fiscal year 2018-2019 totaling $3,999,794 within the General Fund.
Move to approve.
Second.
Discussion on the motion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Item six, to approve carryovers from fiscal year 2017-2018 to fiscal year 2018-2019 totaling $5,490 within the Community Development Block Grant Fund.
Move approval.
Second.
Discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Item seven, to approve carryovers from fiscal year 2017-2018 to fiscal year 2018-2019 totaling $469,838 within the Sewer Operating and Assessment Fund.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion on the motion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Item eight is the Monthly Revenue and Expense Report presented by our Controller.
Good evening, everyone. Tonight's report will be short. There really is not too much to report. We've only completed the year with two months. So everything right now, there's really nothing of concern. Nothing came down from the state saying any grants were being cut. And everything's coming in kind of as we had expected right now on the revenue side with state grants. Just a couple of things I just wanted to bring up. I know last month I did talk about that we are looking at doing a bond sale. We did spend a lot of time in my office on going through all of our capital projects. I know we're trying to plan a CIP meeting next week to try to review some of the capital projects. We're looking to close out a lot. And we actually, originally, we were looking at about a $30 million bond issue. We are now looking at a $22.425 tax-exempt issue along with a $7.9 million taxable issue, which we had talked about during the budget process. The sale is scheduled for right now October 11. And just for point of information, we will be meeting with the rating agencies right now, tentatively, on October 1. So hopefully, everything is moving along with the bond sale. And our audit, we're kind of just waiting right now, closing everything out for last fiscal year. And the auditors will be back here at the end of October. So that's really it, that's all I have. Unless anybody has any special concerns, questions, comments.
Are there any comments or questions for the Controller from the Joint Board?
Just one comment?
Yes.
Just as we commented at the Board of Finance meeting, kudos to you and your staff for managing us for the morass the last fiscal year. And we would expect nothing less going forward.
Yep, it will be a very close end of the year, but hopefully, we'll be able to report more on that next month. But thank you.
Anything further of the Controller? Okay, thank you. For those of you who may have joined us late, this is the Joint Board meeting of the City Council and Board of Finance. If you're here for the Board of Assessment Appeals, you need to check in at the table in the hallway. Otherwise, we are going to adjourn shortly, and we will reconvene the City Council meeting at approximately 7:00 PM. In observation of what today is, in the 17th anniversary of the 9/11 tragedy in New York City, we are going to show a video in between these two meetings as our way of commemorating the event and how it affected so many people. So for those of you who are staying through the next meeting, you'll be able to watch that as we prepare and wait for the 7 o'clock start for the council meeting. Is there any other business proper to come before our Joint Board tonight? Hearing none, is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. We are adjourned, thank you. Okay, good evening, everyone. And I'd like to welcome you to the monthly meeting of the September City Council. Our first item on the agenda is the Pledge of Allegiance. And I'd like to ask Chief Gould to step forward to lead us in that pledge in acknowledgement of today being 9/11 and the many sacrifices of police and fire on that day 17 years ago.
Thank you, Mayor. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. The second item on our agenda is the approval of the minutes of the regular City Council meeting on August 15, 2018, and special meetings on July 31 and August 8.
Move for approval.
Second.
Discussion or clarification needed on any of the minutes as presented? Hearing none, is there a motion to approve the three sets of minutes?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. So tonight for our meeting, the council and I have several pieces under public participation. And I'd like to ask the indulgence of those here that we're going to just add a few things under public participation before we get on with the actual business of the council. The first item is in recognition of Mr. Orville Vith, who is here with us today. He turned 101 recently. And so we've asked him to come for two reasons. One, longevity in general is something to be very proud of. And we are happy to have him here as a citizen in Bristol. So the City Council does have a proclamation for him celebrating his 101st birthday on September 9. He was born in 1917 and raised in Warren County, Missouri. He served in World War II in both Germany and the United States and has lived in Bloomfield while working for the US Postal Service. He was married to Gloria Barbara Vith for 69 years, and they raised three children, enjoys seven grandchildren and two great-grandchildren. And he has enjoyed living in Bristol at the Riverview Apartments since 2012. So therefore, I, Ellen Zapposasou, Mayor of the City of Bristol, do hereby commend and honor Orville for his birthday and wish him continuing health and happiness. So we're going to be presenting him with this proclamation. But even more interesting is that we recognize him for not only his birthday, but the fact that for the last several months, he has been the unofficial clerk of the works for the project happening across the street. On a daily basis, he will bring his motorized scooter down and sit at the corner for hours, watching to make sure that the contractors are doing their job. So we also have another presentation for him tonight. And I'd like to ask, Chris Boyle is here, and Tiffany-- where's Tiffany? And John Latavico from the hospital, if you could step forward. And you have a presentation of a hard hat to give to him so he can become an official part of the crew. And I will actually give to Chris and John to also-- you can give it to him over on the side, if you'd like to present it to him, his honorary construction supervisor certificate. So I think your guys are really in trouble now. Tiffany. Tiffany.
Can you go over and present up to him?
Hi, my name is Tiffany Fernandez. I'm from Bristol Hospital, the project lead. And we just want to say thank you so much for your interest and contribution into our project. So we'd like to give you this honorary hard hat and thank you for being able to have your interest in the community. It's community members like you that make projects like this happen. So thank you very much.
And also, on behalf of the board of directors of Bristol Hospital, we're very honored and so happy that you take such an interest in our community and giving you this hard hat also.
Mr. Vith is slightly hard of hearing, so I'm sure that his daughter, Mary Lynn, who is with him, and his family members will share with him the details of today. Okay, next up for community members to meet is our new Bristol Burlington Health District Director, Marco Palmieri. Just like to have him come up to the podium for a minute, have everybody see who he is. We've already had a very active month since Marco has been appointed. And it's been great working with him. And I'm sure that everyone else is going to have similar experiences as they create working relationships as well. Welcome, Marco.
Thank you very much, Mayor. City Council, residents of Bristol, employees of the City of Bristol, thank you very much. I'm very truly honored and excited to be the Director of Health of the Bristol Burlington Health District. I have a wonderful staff. And our job is to serve the citizens of Bristol and Burlington and to ensure that they have a healthy life and that they're prosperous. And please contact our offices if there's anything we can do to assist and support you. It was a difficult act to follow Mr. Vith, but I want to thank him for his services for our country. And happy birthday. And these are the events that we, as public health people, love to see. So I applaud the city for doing something like this. And I'm honored to be working here. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Marco. Okay, next up, we have Sarah Mitchell, who's going to be talking about the Business Education Foundation that is key to our Board of Education doing a lot of extra special things for some of the teachers in town.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Council, for having me this evening. My name is Sarah Mitchell, and I'm with the Bristol Board of Education as the Community Communications Coordinator and liaison to the Business Education Foundation. The Business Education Foundation was founded in 1991 and is a collaboration between the Bristol Chamber and the Bristol Board of Ed to bring business owners, business employees, the community, all together to create this fund to help support programs within the schools that are innovative for our students that may not be covered through traditional dollars that the Board of Ed is able to provide. So we go out into the community, do various fundraising events. We have one coming up this October. October 19 was a trivia night fundraiser. Some of you were there last year. Thank you for your attendance there. And these funds help with our mentor program, our middle school robotics, the Wowmobile, which is a literacy mobile that is out in Bristol eight weeks during the summer. And our most important program is our mini-grants. Last year, we awarded over $15,000 to 17 Bristol Public School teachers to have these new and innovative programs that have longevity, not just for one year, but throughout the entire school year and throughout their entire school and district. So it's through the help of the community, local government, different businesses, and the education system to help support us. So that's a little bit about who we are. If anyone has any questions, please feel free to contact the Board of Ed, and I can fill in any other details about who we are. Thank you.
Is Dave Proleski going to be in charge of the trivia night again this year? Because I probably won't attend if he is.
I'm sort of spearheading the whole operation this year. And we're going to get you some good people on your team.
Through the chair.
I had good people, that wasn't the issue.
Through the chair, sounds like sour grapes or loser thing.
We all had fun that night, and we helped the kids and the students. And that is the most important piece of what the Business Ed Foundation does.
Well done.
We'll see you on the 19th. Okay, next up, we have our Police Chief, who is going to give the community an update on what has been some well-publicized issues over the last 48 hours, but also over the last few months and actually a regional issue. So we thought this was important enough for those of you who may not be able to stay for the whole meeting, to front-load it up into public participation so that everyone had an opportunity to hear the presentation. And we are live on Nutmeg, so that's even better. Hopefully, our viewers at home are paying attention as well.
Thank you, Mayor, City Council, community. Thank you for coming out tonight. I appreciate being able to come here to talk to you about what's going on and how the police are handling the situation. So just a couple of facts for you here. Since April 9, 2018, we've received 24 complaints of cars being jacked up and their tires and rims stolen off the vehicles. These incidents are primarily taking place in residential neighborhoods and apartment complexes with large parking lots. The latest incidents occurred in the early morning hours of September 10, 2018, in which four vehicles were jacked up and their tires and rims stolen. We've been conducting a situational analysis to determine a proper response. History has shown that random deployment of resources is not effective. Our challenges at the moment are there are approximately 254 miles of roadway, over 52,000 motor vehicles registered in Bristol, and over 21,500 real estate parcels that we are trying to protect. The response that we will use will be specific and coordinated. But we can't do this alone. We need our partners, you, the community, to assist us. There are several ways you can be of assistance to us and each other. For example, if you see something suspicious, please call us. Use the number 860-584-3011 or 911 if there's an emergency. I encourage all of you to take steps to harden the target. These are typically crimes of opportunity. And the objective here is to take that opportunity away. For example, lock your vehicles, homes, and garages at all times. Do not leave valuables in your vehicles. If you must, move them out of plain view or secure them in the trunk. And when you do that, be aware of where you're doing that. Look at the situation around you to make sure that people aren't seeing you move things to the trunk. Do not leave spare vehicle key fobs, keys, or garage door openers in your vehicles. Enable any security features that your vehicle may have, such as security systems, vehicle tracking, et cetera. Always park in a well-lit area. And like I said, this is happening in people's driveways. So it's really important that we harden that target right in front of our own homes. The types of vehicles that are being targeted for theft include Acura, Audi, Honda, Mercedes, Nissan, Subaru, Toyota, Infiniti, and Volkswagen. In most of the incidents, plastic milk crates are being used to support the vehicles off the ground. The incidents are taking place in the early morning hours before daylight. And it's believed that these thefts are occurring and being committed in 10 minutes or less. This is not only occurring in Bristol. There are many other communities experiencing the exact same thing. We are in contact with each other, and we're sharing information through the Connecticut Intelligence Center. The leaders in these communities are sharing similar advice to their residents and visitors as well. In conclusion, the Bristol Police Department is aware of this issue, and we are working on a solution to stop this. Thank you.
Thank you, Chief. Does anybody from the council have any questions or concerns for the chief?
Through the chair. Do you know if there's any trigger or cause for this or something contributing to this, especially the fact that it's happening in other communities as well?
So one of the things that we're looking at through our analysis is obviously, probably, one of the biggest things we need to identify is that there's a market for this. Obviously, these wheels, the type of cars that are being used, they're going somewhere. And we need to figure out where that somewhere is. And then, once we identify that, maybe we can start backtracking to figure. We, at this point, don't know what that is. But that's going to be the key. There's a market for these. So, you know, that's a great point, too. So if you hear of anything or you know of anything where these wheels are possibly ending up, that's information that we're going to want to learn. And that's part of our investigation.
Does anybody else have any questions? Okay, thank you, Chief. Okay, now that Councilman Maderos has joined us, I'd like to do introductions of the council, starting on my far right.
Peter Kelly, Second District.
Greg Hahn, District One.
Mary Fortier, District Three.
Dave Proleski, District Two.
Dave Mills, District Three.
Josh Maderos, District One.
And I'm Ellen Zapposasou, thank you. Moving on to the rest of our public participation list, we have three people. The first one is Ken Archimbo, who'd like to speak about Operation We Can.
Good evening. My name is Ken Archimbo. I'm the Grand Knight for Knights of Columbus here in Bristol. Just to give you a little background about the Knights of Columbus, it was established in the basement of St. Mary's Church in 1882. It was there that our venerable founder, Father Michael J. McGivney, gathered the men of his parish together to create a solution to a recurring problem. Many Catholics, most of whom were immigrants, were working and living in unfavorable conditions. Many typically were dying young, leaving behind widows, orphans, with insufficient financial resources. It was a cold reality that had confronted Father McGivney all too often, not only in the lives of his parishioners, but in his own. As a seminarian, he was forced to leave school, turn to home to aid his family when his father died unexpectedly. Through this story of financial ruin for Catholic families was common, Father McGivney was convinced that there was a way to change the ending. He knew that if the Catholic men in his parish came together in mutual aid, widows and orphan could receive the support they needed. He also knew that if Catholic men, banded together, united by charity and unity, they could strengthen their faith, their families, and their communities. So he established the Knights of Columbus and with it a pass-a-hat insurance program to protect Catholic families in his parish. The Knights of Columbus is represented in nearly every town in Connecticut. Each council has programs to bring the community closer together. In Bristol, in Council 35, the 35th oldest council in the world, we have such programs in operation, such as a Tootsie Roll Drive, a monthly fundraising breakfast, codes for kids, soccer tournaments, basketball free throw, multiple kids poster contests, support for the seminarians. Yes, we have many programs, but we have identified a need in our community that seems to be in need of a helping hand for those in that are dealing with hunger in our beautiful city. This is a nationwide issue. But yes, our community is not immune to the hunger epidemic all around us. I am proposing the new program titled Operation We Can. We were founded on four principles for our daily lives to be guided by: charity, unity, fraternity, and patriotism. In keeping in our first principle of charity, we wish to help give relief in hunger by working in partnership with our community and attempting to unify everyone in this common goal. Do you realize that just here in Connecticut, nearly a half a million residents struggle with hunger? More than 127,000 children are without adequate food. Those are, these are people from all walks of life: children, working parents, seniors, people living with disabilities. They may be your neighbors, friends, family, or people too embarrassed to ask for assistance. In a recent survey done by food pantries and soup kitchens, it revealed that 73% had to choose between food or utilities. 63% had to choose between food or rent. 68% had to choose between food and medical care. Those are hard numbers to swallow in a state as wealthy as Connecticut. The numbers for the United States as a whole is 41.2 million Americans are food insecure, affecting 3.1 million households with children. Then we took, then we look at the world figures. There are 815 million hungry people. But the saddest statistic is that every year, 3.1 million children under five die due to malnutrition. This is why the Knights of Columbus, Pelus Council 35, will be asking the community to help us fill a 20-foot container with canned goods to help feed the needy in our community. All of the food collected will be shared with the Salvation Army, St. Vincent de Paul Mission of Bristol Homeless Shelter, Zion Lutheran Church Soup Kitchen, St. Anne's Food Pantry, and Bryan's Angels. We will be doing this great effort on Friday, November 9, and Saturday, November 10, 2018. That is Veterans Day weekend. It will start at 2:00 PM and will go for 24 hours. We will have people there at the container accepting canned goods for 24 hours or until the container is full. We will have the container at St. Gregory CCD Center in the parking lot at 1043 Stafford Avenue. And we'll have people there all around the clock. We have, we have some flyers. We're going to have banners that we're going to be putting up. I'd like to give this to the council so we can pass them around. The Knights of Columbus is sponsoring this event to help the community of Bristol. I am looking to the leadership of our city to help support and promote this event in any way possible.
Thank you. We'll be happy to do so. If you supply us with those flyers, we'll get them on our All Heart website. And we also have the Bristol Cares Committee and others where we can circulate it as well.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. The next person on our public speaking agenda is Orlando Kelfi on CIO, TIF, and Patch. Interesting combination.
Good evening, everyone. Orlando Kelfi, 64 Leslie Court here in Bristol. Let's start with Patch. It's kind of rhetorical, I suppose, but I noticed the grass was gone, so I'm wondering, did it get skimmed and rolled as odd or where'd it go?
We don't care.
Okay. TIF. So, the next two are in lieu of what's supposed to happen on the board, I guess, when you get around to discussing it. But the TIF plan, if it's adopted, I'm appreciative that the city council has looked into TIF and is willing to adopt a tool that's going to help the Bristol Development Authority and our city attract businesses, development, and create jobs. That's all I want to say in that piece. And then last for the CIO, I'd like to read a letter and I've got some comments I want to make. So, this morning, I learned, again, of an item that's going to occur here regarding Scott Smith. And so, I wrote, "Good morning, Scott. In advance of the council meeting tonight, I wanted to extend my congratulations to you for being named Bristol's First Chief Information Officer. I'm really proud of the people who took the effort to make this historic change occur. I am equally pleased that you are the person to take this role. As I, as you know, am a huge proponent of a separate MIS department or division, and the lead role you are assuming will provide the impetus for initiating its growth and importance. I am especially looking forward to the incorporation of your department's plans into our citywide strategic plan, especially with projects such as the citywide wireless, potential adoption of 5G when it becomes feasible, and better incorporation of information security, training, and tools into our infrastructure. Wherever that falls within the OSI stack, if ever I could be of assistance, please don't hesitate to ask." There's a technical word in an OSI stack, it's Open Systems Interconnection. If you need to look it up, use Google. So, the reason that I, there are a few reasons that I sent this letter, and I just want to go through in no specific order. First of all, I want to thank the controller, personnel, the mayor's office, the city council for creation of this role. I know it's taken a lot of time and effort to create this position. I've been an advocate of it, as I've mentioned, since I've been on the Board of Finance. I do believe that there is a great deal of benefits to be derived from the separation of duties in this office, and I want to go into some of those, if you please. So, Bristol, I look at Bristol as a business, right? It's similar to a corporation of $3.917 billion with a budget of $194,498,085 for this upcoming year, with approximately 60,000 shareholders. Our mayor acts as a CEO, and so there's a need for a CIO, and I'm going to give you some reasons. Strategic plans for the entire city, including the Board of Education. If you think about an enterprise-wide plan, it's going to help bring our system, our city, to the forefront in terms of those plans. I mentioned the citywide wireless project. When we had a vote on the Board of Finance, it was five to four against it, but had that project been incorporated as part of a strategic plan, and that strategic plan laid out for everyone to understand and to view, and we looked at the efficiencies, the innovations, where we could invite enterprises as businesses, perhaps the outcome would be different. And so, I'm looking forward to the adoption of the strategic plan and to see how Scott and his department create those plans and work with the other entities. I've been advocating, again, that this be a separate department, and part of that was to avoid the oversight that could have potentially led to catastrophic consequences. For example, recently, we learned that there was a lack of a city backup system, citywide backup system, which had, I believe, it's been corrected now. In that situation, Scott came before the Board of Finance and requested funding for a backup system. It was approved, but Scott's management, which were former administration people, former corporate council, former controllers, allegedly denied Scott permission to go purchase that system, which put us in potential legal jeopardy. There were failures to comply with legal, state audit, and federal regulations for backing up certain documents. So, now that Scott will be leading his own department and division, although there is always a chain of command, he's got the authority to make those final decisions on purchasing. Without the city departments, the possibility exists to create perhaps an information technology board to assist Scott and his department with plans, oversight, and adoption. In the city, there are lots of people that work in IT that are very well-educated. I would like to offer my services from the Board of Finance to be a liaison, if I could. We have Maria O'Brien here, who is very well-versed in IT. There's other people whose names I won't mention, but certainly, if they had the time, could volunteer to help with such a board. Scott could also work with, and will work with, I assume, Justin and Mark from the BDA in the Chamber of Commerce, Police, Fire Department, the Board of Education, and so forth, to create this innovation plan that we could use to work to attract businesses. In the city, we've embraced the medical industry with the Ambulatory Center going across the street, the entertainment sector with the Arch Magnet School and ESPN, for example, the distribution sector with Amazon and Pods. So, now possibly, we can work to attract STEM-related businesses. At one of the Board of Education meetings, I've heard Jeff Coggiorno talk about STEM in our city, and along with input from people such as, again, Maria O'Brien, who's closely associated with New England First, Any First, and PACE, which is robotics, basically. PACE is the Practicing Engineering and Competitive Cooperative Excellence Team. It's the only team in Bristol that competes nationwide in robotics. They are based out of, or hosted by, the Earth G Russell Manufacturing Facility up on Clark Avenue in the Board of Finance. I believe, two years ago, approved funds that the BDA, I believe, had offered to them for development and growth. So, we have this innovation, we have these leaders, we have the interest, certainly, in the city. And I would like to see Scott work with setting up potentially an incubator corridor aimed at STEM. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
We are going to speak about that later in the agenda under the Salary Committee report, and it was on my radar to talk about the need for a technological advisory group of some sort. So, I'd like to pursue that. We'll be looking for input. Thank you. Our last speaker is Tom Doyle from High Street on TIF and tax freezes.
Hi. Good evening, everyone. Well, first of all, I want to thank the police department. I know we've had some issues with crime lately, a lot of extra, but whenever I have to call about an issue in my neighborhood, dispatch is always very polite talking to me, and it seems like the police always respond promptly. I've also been happy with code enforcement in my neighborhood, too. Things are getting better. Anyway, I wanted to just talk for a minute about TIF. I honestly don't really understand a lot of what this is, but I'm not really interested in having it in our town. I know I live downtown, and it'd be nice to have some attention paid to downtown, but this just seems to add in a lot of extra layers of complexity to our taxes. You know, as it is now, everybody pays in our taxes into one fund, and when a big issue comes up, we can all talk about it and decide yes or no, like Memorial Boulevard. Having some taxes paid into a separate fund, it's starting to turn into a little bit of a shell game. You know, we already have state and federal programs where our taxes go into separate funds, and that money gets set aside for specific programs, and people are almost fighting to get all kinds of grants money. That money that gets put aside gets spent. It gets spent because people think it's free money and it's being given away. It's kind of like Halloween candy, and, I mean, I love giving out Halloween candy, but I get to put a limit on how much I spend on it. How much is the TIF going to be? How many millions a year? I supported MBS, and I know that some people in town were against it. It does, it is costing a good amount of taxpayer money, and I am looking forward to it opening, and I'm looking forward to volunteering there, but I would say that maybe since we've been spending so much money lately, I would say try to hold off on spending anything extra and try to just work with what we have. If it were up to me, I would say that one thing we could do to improve downtown is just keep cracking down on crime and blight. And then the other issue I want to talk about was, I see that there is a tax freeze application for some properties on High Street. Now, I had come down to code enforcement previously and spoken out against this. I don't know, maybe Ellen or Dave, I don't remember if either one of you were there. Did anything come out of that?
Yes. So, the last meeting that you were at, which I believe was the August meeting, we did not approve the tax assessment freeze application because we didn't feel it was complete and we felt that there were many loose ends in terms of what was happening on that parcel. It was re-presented last week, and all of the conditions that we had set had been met, and it's only for a partial half of the property, not the entire property. So, there's still work that needs to be done on the other two.
Well, when I had, one thing I mentioned at code enforcement was that I was unhappy because, of course, they were doing a lot of work renovating the buildings, but they absolutely destroyed the front yard and particularly the sidewalks. I mean, I don't, you can just walk down the sidewalk and look, the sidewalks on either side of those three buildings are still in great shape, and in front of those three buildings, they're absolutely destroyed from all the times they've driven over them with heavy machinery and dumpsters. My concern is, I don't want to see the town coming back and giving out free sidewalks to them, because if the town will do that, then there's nothing stopping me from taking a sledgehammer to my sidewalk, because it's getting pretty bad already. I could use a free sidewalk, too. I can afford to pay for mine. So, was there any way of addressing the sidewalk issue?
Tom, do you remember if that was part of the discussion? I'm going to call on our assessor, Tom DiNoto, to address that part, because it's a little difficult to assess for, and I don't want to prevaricate on the issue, because I wasn't here for the whole piece over the summer, so.
One of the components that the chief building official had indicated at that meeting was that the next project would not go through, which is also a part of the assessment freeze, unless a complete landscaping package design, which the developer had submitted, was completed and completely effectuated, including the sidewalks. So, the contractor is going to continue to bring in heavy equipment as they go forward with the other two properties that are listed as 60, High Street, and that obviously won't go through unless the complete site design package is complete.
Okay. Thank you.
All right. Thanks, Tom. Well, I mean, I'm glad you guys paid attention to my complaint. But I also found out that the developer of these three buildings is the same one who did 11 Summer Street. Is that wrong?
He did, and 11 Summer Street has since been sold.
I'm aware of that. I had quite a few problems with 11 Summer Street when it was first built. I would complain quite a bit. When they first put it together, they didn't even plan an area out for a dumpster on their property. They were keeping it on the sidewalk or the lawn, and they wouldn't even bother to empty it all the time. They never bothered doing lawn maintenance, despite having just a postage stamp, and they had issues with tenants parking on the sidewalks. These aren't unusual. I see these with out-of-town landlords in my neighborhood, unfortunately. But there were a couple of things that I found unusual. Number one, someone in the building department had told me that they had had their sidewalk ripped up after they got in a new water pipe, and I was told that they were given a certificate of occupancy on the condition that they repair their sidewalk, and they did not repair their sidewalk, and a few years later, they were given a free sidewalk by the town. I wasn't really happy with that, but if I'm wrong on these facts, you know, please say so. This is just for me speaking to people in the building department. But, you know, it's not so much these issues. I know there's blight and crime in my neighborhood. I wouldn't have a problem with these blight issues, but the problem was crime. In the first six months that apartment was in operation, there were, it appeared five times in the police blotter. That's quite a bit for a six-apartment house. Honestly, I was happy when it was sold. That was, I'm embarrassed to say, that was the biggest improvement I could think of to that property. We need good landlords downtown, especially in the large multifamilies. I'm sure the owner might be a nice guy, but I, in my opinion, I don't think he screened his tenants satisfactorily, and that's my concern here. Does anyone know how many apartments there are in these three buildings?
I didn't bring that part of my packet. Yeah. There's several.
Um...
Two, four, six, six, maybe?
There might be more.
Yeah.
But the more important question is, I mean, does anyone here know how much that tax freeze is worth if you vote for it today?
Yes, we do.
Through the chair, let me get back to you with that. We have the information. We were given that by our assessor. I just can't find it right now, but I'll get it, I'll get the information to you either before the meeting ends, when I find it, or we can talk after.
Well, it looked to me like it was on the agenda for tonight, so I'll just say that.
From what I could tell, at most...
Our assessor's indicating that he has it.
Okay. Good.
Thank goodness for him.
Based on the current mill rate, it's about $5,852 if that mill rate were to stay stable. Is that for a year? No, over the five years.
Oh, I finally got my click to work. Okay.
Well, I mean, in my opinion, I would say I do not want the tax freeze going through. I would just ask that you wait a year or two until after the properties, until the buildings have been occupied, and just make sure that things are going okay there. You know, 11 Summer, like some of the other properties in my neighborhood, drags down the neighborhood because of crime issues, and I really don't want to see that. Remember, this is across from our main branch of the library and the children's library. I hope you'll try to keep this neighborhood in good shape. I do what I can, but I'm just a single homeowner. So, I would say, please, please wait on that, just see what happens. Anyway, sorry for taking so much time, but thank you all for listening.
Thank you, Tom. Tom DiNoto coming back to the podium. I think we have a time issue with these, don't we? Is there...
Yeah. No, I did misspeak. It is 5,852 potentially annually.
Okay. And do you have on your notation there how many units, which was another question?
Sure.
Forty-eight and fifty-two.
That's two buildings, a three-family and a six-family.
Okay.
And didn't we have an issue in the past, excuse me, through the chair, with there being a timeframe for them to take advantage of this?
A 12-month build-out period.
Right. So, in other words, we really don't have the choice of waiting a couple of years to see what, how a building is doing. Is that correct? Is that your understanding? The way Mr. Doyle suggested, I'm not...
So, based on when the CO, when he took out permits, he has a defined, I thought he had a defined time within the ordinance in order to make application.
Correct. As soon as the building permits are taken out, there's a 12-month construction period. At the discretion of the committee, it can be extended.
But, through the chair, we just modified that last year because we tightened it up because there was, we thought was, not abuse, but it was...
Casual.
Casual. And somebody came back five years later. We just tightened that whole ordinance up, and we are required by, through the ordinance, to act in a procedural manner. I don't think we can delay it, to be honest, based on what the ordinance says, but, you know, Tom, we just revamped that whole 5-57 in our ordinances last fall, maybe?
I think I saw something about where if there's code enforcement action, then it can be taken back, but, you know, code enforcement action isn't always taken officially.
Well, yeah, I got to tell you, we've tightened up a lot this past year.
I don't recall that there was any, I don't recall how much official code action there was at 11 Summer Street.
I don't know.
Unofficially, people can go and talk to the owner and have him take care of stuff that never goes on the record.
We had public hearings, just so you know, through our ordinance committee, when we were discussing changes to this ordinance, and it was significant because there were, the majority of the people who spoke or called me or wanted to talk about it, wanted us to make sure we kept this ordinance on the books for cleaning up blight and giving an incentive. I had one person tell me, "I'll stop buying buildings in Bristol if you don't keep this in place." And, you know, so there was a, I don't know if you remember Mr. Mills' this, but there was, there were a lot of emotion about making sure that we did this. We wanted to tighten up because we thought it was, as the mayor said, casual, and we did. And I think through this, through the ordinance, I don't think there was much alternative we have in terms of a wait-and-see, to be honest.
Well, I mean, I would say that if there are people who are going to stop buying buildings because they don't get free money from the town, I say, "Good." I mean, I didn't get free money for my house. I pay maybe three grand a year in taxes. It's a very modest home, but you're talking about close to 30 grand just for this one tax freeze, and you can't predict what's going to happen in the future, but you can look at his last property.
Well, and I think that, to your point about the importance of the landlord and a community... a community, one of the reasons that we didn't approve everything was because we wanted to have some skin in the game in terms of holding him accountable for what we needed him to do. I've spoken to him about tenant screening. I can tell you that the new owner of 22 High Street is going to be in my office on Monday morning to have a discussion about that, and I can tell you that in June of this past year, when the owners of 267 came up after their closing, we had a rather frank discussion in my office about what our expectations were. They didn't follow them. They spent the summer being fined by the code enforcement committee and are now crying foul and are coming in tomorrow to talk about why we won't work with them, quote-unquote. We have a zero tolerance with landlords who don't follow the rules, and I think that our actions speak louder than our words in terms of, we're making it happen. We may not talk about it, we may not advertise it, but this program is but one tool that we have, and in this case, he's not getting what he asked for. He's getting a small portion of it, which I think, in terms of a good faith effort, he has done a majority of what we asked him to do, which I don't think he would have done otherwise. So, that being said, I think it's about us and you holding us accountable through code enforcement and otherwise, but believe me when I tell you, the landlords are getting the message very clear that we're serious about it. And if the new owners of 267 Main Street were here right now, I'm sure they would agree because they racked up thousands of dollars of fines because they weren't paying attention, and they put someone on the ground here in Bristol while they were in Brooklyn and didn't pay attention. And we told them straight out in June what our expectations were. They didn't follow them, and now, without even having a single tenant in that building, they are thousands of dollars underwater because of the fines from all departments, Fire Marshal, Building, Zoning, and Health District.
Okay, well, you make some good points. I just hope you'll remember that I will be coming back whenever I see issues at this property. You can't, once the tenants come in, you can't control if they get arrested or not. Again, that's what we saw at Summer Street. I don't want to see this. This isn't quite my block, but it's just the next block over.
It's all of our blocks. Downtown belongs to all of us, and it's a major gateway. So, I don't want you to think that we're being insucent towards your concerns, but honestly, we know what's happening with these landlords, and we are going to be on top of it, just like we have been for the last six months. And if you had been at code enforcement last week, this probably wouldn't be a discussion. Well, I'm just saying.
All right, thank you again for listening.
Okay, thank you, Tom. I think that is it for public participation, unless there's anybody here in the audience that did not get here in time to use the sign-up sheet and would like to address the council, you can do so now. Okay, seeing none, we're going to move on to our announcement section. We are running a little behind schedule, so I'd like to ask the council, too, if you do have something that is not relevant for this month, we can put it off till next month. We are showing a new feature, and our new chief information officer is going to run our screen for us. We are trying to get people used to using our Bristol All Heart marketing website, so we're now using the slideshow to talk about the announcements that we're going to be having tonight and also kind of reminding everyone to go to the website so that we will do that. So, who will go in order of our announcements? Who would like to talk about the blood drive? Anybody have that one at the senior center? Greg, I'm pretty sure you're the liaison.
Well, I do not have it, but I'm happy to talk about it. The Bristol Senior Center is going to have their blood drive, and that's on Stafford Avenue, as you know where it is. It's on September 13th from 10:00 a.m. to 3:00 p.m., and you can call in for more information to the senior center, and the blood drive will be there, let's see, like I said, 10:00 a.m. to 3:00 p.m., and just show up and donate your blood.
It's a critical time right now, coming off of the summer and the vacations. Okay, what's our next announcement? So, this is a big one. Turn the Town Teal. Tony and Judy Ladavico started this. For many of you know, ovarian cancer has very few symptoms, so the City of Bristol and the Board of Education is strongly supporting this effort as part of our wellness initiative. Next. Okay, so here's our big announcement, and we can turn this one to the next one because I don't want to look at myself. Okay, so, the Bristol Police Lip Sync Challenge is ready and waiting to be released, and tonight, we are letting everybody know that we are going to be premiering our lip sync challenge at the We Are One softball game. That's part of our MUM Festival festivities, which is happening on Saturday night at Muzzy Field. So, the game, the first game kicks off at 4:30, and then there's a second game, and in between the break of the second game and the third game, which will be the police versus fire, we will be rolling out the Showmobile and showing the video. And I also, I think I saw Rory Gyo here. Where's Rory? See, he was here a minute ago. He and his family are going to be the premier sponsors from Dunkin' Donuts. I'm sure all of you will appreciate that tie-in for the police lip sync video. We have the police union president, Jim Palatier, in the back of the room, who kind of coordinated the effort, along with a daughter of one of our police officers, Julia Seer, Julia Cody, helped with the choreography, and we were really very fortunate to have Tom Mazzarella from Maz Media donate his time and effort to create film and edit and produce it. So, for those of you who are able to come to the We Are One charity softball tournament, you can bring a school supply or a canned good, and that goes to help all the school families throughout the year. It is a free event, other than any type of free will donation, and the weather looks great, and the premiere is scheduled for 7:45, 8:00 p.m. It'll take us a little while to set up the screen, but I think everybody's going to really enjoy watching that video, and it's a great showcase for the community as well. About three months too late from when the lip sync challenges were at the height of their popularity, but that's what happens when videos take men to put them together, right, Jim? Okay, maybe we should go to the next slide. Okay, who has the German festival?
Oh, Emmanuel Lutheran Church. It's the Fourth Annual German Festival, will take place on Saturday, September 15th. It's going to take place from noon till 9:00 p.m. It's at 154 Meadow Street in Bristol, rain or shine. There's going to be a beer garden with German beers, homemade German desserts, kids' activities. It's a bratwurst, sauerkraut, potato pancakes. It's going to be a great day, so come on down.
Excuse me, can I add something about that, Councilman Hahn? Mayor Zappo Sasso is going to be tapping the keg to kick off the festival, so that's an important point.
She's going to be attempting to tap the keg.
And that's at Friday at 6:00.
Yeah. Okay, is there any other ones? MUM Festival, so it's kicking off, and those of us on the city council would just like to remind everybody to support the MUM Festival. There's a large schedule of events, and for those of you who own your own homes and have businesses in town, we'd love to see you dress them up with MUMs over the next course of the month or so. Really kind of our signature flower. It designates a piece of our history, but also it's a great way to kind of showcase community pride as well. So, that starts, it actually technically starts this weekend with the Miss MUM pageant as well as the We Are One softball, and then turning into the big weekend a week from now with the festival and the parade. So, we hope to see everyone there. Okay, and then we have, rushing right into the next holiday season.
Showcase of the Stars is having their annual holiday festival. It's called, it's a Christmas time in the city. It's going to take place on December 1st, 7:00 at St. Paul's Catholic High School. But the important thing now is that there are auditions and first rehearsal for the children's and teen chorus on Sunday, September 30th. It's going to be at St. Joseph Church Guild Hall, 335 Center Street in Bristol. So, come at 5:00 and be prepared to sing a few lines, Peter, and sign up, and again, that will be the first rehearsal as well, so for teens and kids.
This one I have, there's going to be a manufacturing and trades job fair, October 4th. It's at the Doubletree by Hilton. It's from 9:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m., and it's free admission to the public, and vendors can sign up by registering with the Central Connecticut Chambers at their .org website.
Your honor, can I just add something to that? Part of that program, obviously, there's over 10,000 openings for manufacturing and jobs in the state of Connecticut, and that was the reason that this program is being put, one of the reasons the program is being put on. So, it's open to students, it's open to anybody in the public that would like to possibly think of a new career change. There's going to be lots of manufacturers there, and it's not, obviously, manufacturing has changed tremendously over the years, so it's very important that you get the word out for that.
Thank you. David?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. You know, I want to thank Sarah for being here tonight. The Bristol Education Foundation is a really important foundation, dear to my heart, and Councilman Peter Kelly and I are on the board and have been on for a long time. It's a great way to support education in our town and to support creativity. There will be a trivia night held at the Doubletree on October 19th. We had our first this earlier this year. It was a tremendous success, a lot of fun. The mayor didn't have a good time, but everybody else did, because you came in second, right, Mayor?
Yes.
I think so. But it's a great time to have up to six people on your team, and it benefits a very important cause for education in our town, the Bristol Ed Foundation.
We're going to go back a holiday now to Halloween, but on October 20th, the Bristol Parks and Rec Department is holding their annual Halloween carnival at Rockwell Park. It's from 2:00 to 4:00 p.m., but new this year, they're doing the trunk-or-treat event, which is a lot of fun. They're soliciting businesses and organizations that want to participate in that, opening up a car trunk and decorating it and handing out either candy or healthy items that are sealed, pencils, that kind of thing. So, the deadline of submitting your trunk would be Friday, October 12th.
Okay, so, just to reiterate, there's all of these events and more on the BristolAllHeart.com website, so community groups and event planners can, for free, load your event onto the website, and that will be the place that we encourage everyone to go to learn about what's happening in Bristol. We do have a couple of other non-event-related items, so we'll just leave that slide up for now so everyone can get used to seeing it, and we'll go back to, let's see, we ended over here. Do you have any other announcements, Councilman Maderos? Okay, Councilman Mills?
Yes, the only one I have is, again, pertains to the site, and that's, as you know, we have asked for names for the naming of the road project across the street. Next week, on the website, this will be available. There'll be a ballot on the website, and you can go to Bristol All Heart and click on Doing Business, and you'll be able to vote online. There'll be other ways to vote also, but you'll be able to name the road right online starting next week.
Councilman Proleski.
Thank you, Mayor. I have two from the Fire Department. The Fire Department received $32,000 for an extrication device from the H2O for Heroes program from Firehouse Subs. Firehouse Subs is located on Route 6, great corporate citizens, and they're doing a meaningful, making a meaningful contribution to our town through their charitable acts. Second thing is, the chief wanted me to remind everyone that the smoke detector replacement program is still in play, and if you are, for any qualified Bristol residents, call 584-7964, extension four, and they'll come out to your home and fix you up. Thank you, Mayor.
Councilman Fordyare?
None for me, thank you.
Councilman Hahn?
Yes, the Bristol Burlington Health District is having their seasonal flu clinics soon, and they're for people 18 years and older. The Bristol Flu Clinic is located at 240 Stafford Avenue, and the date of that clinic is October 9th from 10:00 a.m. to 12:00 p.m., and in Burlington, at the Burlington Town Hall Senior Center on Spielman Avenue on November 1st from 10:00 a.m. to 12:00 p.m. When you do come, please bring proof of residency, Bristol or Burlington, and bring all insurance cards, and please wear your short sleeves.
Thank you. Councilman Kelly?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. As all of you know, there were a few instances involving mailing of an unknown substance last week, two here in Bristol, and others throughout the state, and this letter was written to the mayor from the president of First Bristol Federal Credit Union pertaining to the incident that happened at the credit union. And it reads, "Mayor Zappo Sasso, I would like to take a moment to thank the Bristol Fire Department and the Bristol Police Department for their support and guidance with our security incident here last Wednesday. As you are already aware, First Bristol Federal Credit Union received the letter in the mail that contained an unknown substance. First Bristol called 911 and received an overwhelming response. Not having ever dealt with this type of incident before, I was directly involved in securing the facility and our employees' safety. With the guidance of the Bristol Fire Department's Deputy Chief John Ziogus, we were calmly directed on how to secure the facility and safeguard our staff. I want to commend him and the expert training of the department in handling the situation professionally. Both he and other members of the department were in communication with my affected employees, providing guidance and instruction to keep everyone safe. The department stayed with us all day and entered the building to remove an employee who was directly affected by the incident. Chief Ziogus and the Fire Department of Bristol demonstrated to me the high level of training and execution in a potentially dangerous situation. In addition, the Bristol Police Department did a great job containing the area and assisting me and my team as we moved throughout the day. Detective Ward was extremely helpful in providing support and guidance as other agencies were called to the situation. He went far, he went as far as visiting our employee in the hospital to check on her welfare as we remained on-site to activate our disaster recovery plan. I would also like to thank Detective Doyle as he stayed with my management team and provided assistance and guidance to have our facility cleaned by professionals who deal with this type of situation. These officers are a fine example of the Bristol Police Department, and I am thankful they were there to support us. Finally, I would like to thank you, the mayor, for coming on-site to help us make an assessment to move forward and get through this incident. We received notification yesterday by the FBI that the letter sent here tested negative for any biological threat agents, and we were one of 30 other events in the days that followed. On behalf of my Board of Directors and the staff here at First Bristol, I would like to thank you and the City of Bristol's first responders for their efforts. We are lucky to have such highly trained and talented individuals to serve our company, our community, and this is signed sincerely, Mark Karnakio, President, CEO of First Bristol Federal Credit Union."
Thank you. And not to belabor the point, but I was really impressed going up there that that small business, which in essence it is, as much it is as a credit union, had a disaster recovery plan that they executed and implemented almost immediately. And I think those of us who are familiar with the small business community know that, most of us know we should have one, that there should be one somewhere, but the fact that it was actually very well executed, I think speaks volumes for the professionalism of the bank, and I was very happy that everything worked out the way that it did. Thank you. Okay, one more announcement, and this is actually, with so much going on tonight, I hope it doesn't get overlooked, but we've been working for a really long time to strengthen the workforce capacity in Bristol because we know that a healthy community is one that has good jobs and that people are working and that they have access to training for jobs that they might aspire to. And so, one of the first things that I did last year when I was elected was I called Cindy Bombard at the Chamber, and I said, "What can we do in order to make this better for both our employers and the people who are potential employees?" Having worked at the New Burton Chamber of Commerce for years and knowing that the role that Cindy had played with Capital Workforce before she came here to Bristol into the Chamber, I knew that there were services and programs available. But unfortunately, Bristol always seemed to be just a little too outside the map in terms of accessing and having those services located here for our residents. So, over the last few months, we've worked pretty diligently, and we're very happy tonight to announce that in partnership with Tungssas at Bristol and Tracy Ariel, the executive director is here with us tonight. Tracy, stand up because you're kind of new, let people see who you are. We just celebrated 18 years of Tungssas at Bristol being in downtown last week, and I think it's really important that we now see that we have these other partnerships, including with the Chamber, which is above Tracy, and with Capital Workforce Partners who have now committed to bringing in the American Job Center Services, which is going to be located within Tracy's facility at Tungssas at Bristol. And I just want to read a little bit of the description because this workforce development partnership, effective next month, is going to host the Job Center and services that are going to be provided to Bristol employers and job seeker customers, offering workforce development and educational services. So, this college campus American Job Center will offer new opportunities to deliver employment-related services to job seekers and employers, as well as students at the college who are just beginning their careers. It's going to support enhanced career development opportunities, increased job training capacity, and improved access to an array of the college facilities and employment services. and improved access to an array of the college facilities and employment services, including workshops and career assistance. So, again, it's going to be here in Bristol. Our people are not going to have to travel to New Britain, or to Hartford, or phone something in, or have some type of webinar. We are going to be able to service them right here in downtown Bristol. I think it's really important with these partnerships, and especially because, just coincidentally, they're all clustered right on Upper North Main Street, that we're really creating an opportunity for people to get to those jobs. You've heard us talk in previous meetings about the importance of the jobs. We have manufacturing fairs, we have the Amazon component with these interesting shifts that are happening, that people can maybe have a second job, or, you know, shared childcare responsibilities while working overnight, but we also have to get these people to the jobs. Not only do we train them, we have to get them there. So we are continuing our conversations with the Connecticut Department of Transportation as well, on really flexing some of these bus schedules that I think could be better maximized. So now we're almost starting to see this complete picture emerge of what we can do to ensure this job growth and development. So, I'm excited about this announcement, and it's something that I think people are going to see almost immediate results from. And Tracy, I don't know if you wanted to say a few words about anything that you see happening at your campus, and I know I'm putting you on the spot, and I apologize for that, but since you're here, it's great to actually celebrate with you and talk about what this could potentially mean for the people that you see come through your doors, as well as the ones you hope to.
Absolutely. Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, City Council. So, we at Tungus at Bristol, or Tungus Community College, we fondly call Tungus at Bristol. We recently celebrated, as the mayor had said, 18 years. We had 2,700 people come through our doors last year without the American Job Center, having been there yet. So we are so looking forward to having the A G, American Job Center Services and Facility people there to help the community members. It's an exciting opportunity, and a couple of years in the making, so we're happy to have them.
Thank you so much. Does anybody have any questions or comments? Okay, thank you, Tracy. All right. I think that's it for our announcements. We do, I'm sure for those of you who read the paper, saw that the Chamber is also going to be hosting the Small Business Express in their offices, which is another really great opportunity for our business community as well. For employee recognition, I think that the theme tonight has really been our police and fire members of our departments, with 9/11 being on so many people's minds tonight, so we'll just leave it at recognizing their efforts. You know, kind of off the beaten path, for those of you who attend our farmers markets, you will have seen both the Fire Department there to entertain the kids, and we've had the K-9 vehicle there a couple of times as well, so that families can meet our K-9 dogs, and I think that's just another extension of the community relations piece that both departments do very well. Moving on to the consent calendar, the first would be to ask members of the council if there's anything that they would like pulled off that would require discussion. Okay. Hearing none, is there a motion to approve the consent calendar, which is items 5A through L?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Moving into reports and committee reports, I believe last month we tried to bundle some of these. Councilman Proleski, would you like to do that again?
Your Honor, I would. I'd like to ask the council to provide us with a motion to waive the readings for the sections A, 6A through F. Can I just give a brief overview? Item 6A is from the Ordinance Committee, and it's the establishment of Section 18-192, which provides the establishment of a downtown Bristol tax incentive financing district. Per Connecticut general statutes, we need to do this in order to effectuate the TIF program that we're going to talk about later. Items B through D are from the Real Estate Committee. We have offers for the purchase of city-owned property on Munchhausen and 63 Gridley Street. And item 6D specifically is for the approval of Emmanuel Lutheran Church, which is having their German festival this weekend. They've asked for permission to use Center Square for some of its overflow parking, and we've done that before, and we are getting all the proper insurance certificates and everything, and the Real Estate Committee is effective, has supported that and referred it here. And items E and F are on the code enforcement applications for High Street and for Beth's Avenue.
So, do we?
So, motion to waive the reading.
Motion to waive the reading of items 6A through F.
Second.
Discussion on the motion. Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. You still have the floor.
Your Honor, just, we have a motion to approve the items on agenda, items A through, 6A through F, as presented.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion on the motion to approve 6A through F. Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item G is the update regarding the Mayor's opioid task force that actually meets tomorrow night, but I did want to just, somewhere, show the members of the public, as well as our audience, the fact that our first deliverable is a brochure. The first one has a cover that says, "You have survived an opioid overdose," and this is going to be used by our first responders, on the ambulances, as well as the police departments, when they're responding to a family situation, or anything that there's other people involved. This will be left behind, out of their med bag, so that when those family members regroup, friends, or anyone comes back from the situation, most likely a hospital visit, they will have something to use in terms of a resource. Within it, it talks about what are opioids, the overdose, the naloxone, resources, local pharmacies, alternative pain management methods, as well as a reference to recognizing the signs of an opioid overdose, as well as tips for the police department. The second one is more community focused, and the cover is different. It talks about the opioid community crisis for families and people who are looking for information to help. So, those are going to be finalized probably tomorrow night, and then they will be in circulation at the police and EMS, and anybody else who wants them as well. We also had a request from the lawsuit that the previous administration signed us up for with the opioid lawsuit against the pharmaceutical companies. It is asking us to sign off on an op-ed letter that talks about this whole matter. This came in today, so it doesn't appear on the agenda, but unfortunately, it has a September 14th deadline. So, it's a, something that is being asked of the over 1,000 communities that have signed on. We are still in the matter of listening to a bunch of testimony within the actual court case, but in the interim, they've attached an op-ed piece that they drafted, these are the lawyers, regarding the opioid cases brought by the government entities. Their intention is to publish this in national media outlets such as the New York Times, Washington Post, USA Today, CNN, and Time Magazine. I did read the letter this afternoon. I am happy to pass it around to the council members if they'd like to look at it, but I will just tell you that I just think that it's a little bit of window dressing, and I don't think that it's something that I would be supportive of, but I will yield to the opinion of the body as a whole, if I'll just pass it that way, and we can come back to that item under opioid task force, under unfinished business. Is there an update regarding the Memorial Boulevard School that anybody would like to offer?
Thank you, Your Honor. Last month, Councilman Mills, I think, proposed a pretty good idea that we should have a monthly report from the MBS Building Committee. The Building Committee consists of representation from the Board of Finance, the Board of Education, the City Council, construction and contractors, engineers, parents, and we had an opening this past month, and we've appointed Lori Ashner, who is a retired, she ran the Art Department before her retirement for the City of Bristol, and brings a great teacher perspective for the eventual build-out of the Boulevard. In addition to that, this past month, we hired, we voted to recommend to this council the hiring of an architect firm, which is Quisenberry Arcane and Malik LLC, and because of the amount of detail that is being presented to this committee, we're meeting, again, a special meeting this Thursday night with, one of the topics of discussion will be having more frequent meetings. There's just so much detail and so much that's coming forth, that monthly meetings just doesn't get it done, and we're not making the progress that the committee hopes to make. And the next phase is on construction design contractors, in which we're working on that over this month and next. So we're going to try to pick up the pace, Mayor, and that's the update. If anyone has any questions, we'd be glad to answer.
The architect's contract is actually on our agenda, so that will be good to get done. Item 12, so we'll be coming to that as well. Okay. We're going to move and ask to have an item brought on to the agenda from the Salary Committee that met earlier tonight. Councilman Fordyare?
Thank you, Mayor. This motion would be pending approval by the Bristol Professional and Supervisors Association Union, and it would be to approve changes as proposed with regard to the Management Information Services Director, to change the name of the Information Systems Division to the Information Technology Department, which shall be its own department, and to refer to the Board of Finance for funding purposes.
Okay, so the first motion would be to bring it on to the table. The motion has been made, is there a second?
Second.
Discussion on the motion. Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. So now the motion has been made and presented by the Chairwoman of the Salary Committee. Does anybody need it or restate it? Are there any questions concerning the motion as it's been brought forward?
And do we need a second for the motion?
Second.
Okay, there's been a second for the main motion.
Okay.
Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Is Scott still here?
Hello.
Oh, hi. Oh, you're still here. Anything you want to offer to the masses on your grand plans?
No, I'm just looking forward to working on the IT strategic plan, so we're going to be coming back to the Board of Finance and the Joint Board to look at IT from an enterprise level, and that's our hope, to bring in the city and the Board of Ed into one entity to do that, and hopefully, you know, save some resources along the way. So, thanks.
Thank you, and congratulations. And next month, you won't have to run our slideshow, because Councilman Maderos will be on time. Is there any other reports or committee reports to come before?
I think we have to vote on that item.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
And I do have one more clarification from the Salary Committee. I believe it was last month, we had approved our new tax collector's position, in other words, the new hire for that position, and we misstated what step in the union contract she would be starting at. We had said that she would be starting at step two, and per the contract, based on all the circumstances, she should be starting at step three. And again, we're not voting on that tonight, because it's an automatic thing that the contract provides for step three. We just misstated it at the last meeting, so we wanted to make sure that we put on the record that it should be step three. That's it, Your Honor.
Thank you. Committee reports?
No, I just wanted to add one thing to the letter that I read. I failed to ask to make a motion to refer the letter to both the police and fire boards.
Oh, that's a good idea.
So we can just add that to the record, please.
Okay, so the motion has been made to refer the letter from Mark Carnaccio of First Bristol Federal Credit Bank to both the police and the fire boards.
Yes, please.
So, second.
Discussion on the motion. Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, if you could just make sure that the city clerk has a copy of that, she can forward it. Committee reports are down here. Anybody?
I have none.
None.
Okay. Moving on to unfinished business, are there any items from the council? Did the opioid letter make it down to this end, or are you still reading it?
Yes, well, we actually...
All right, we'll come back to that. New business, update on shared services and regional initiatives. The first new business item, I'd just like to reference that we do have the Insurance and Health Benefits Office, which is the combination of staff from the Board of Education, as well as the city, now operating on the third floor in the former probate offices. They were all there together for the first time today. Everything's being unpacked, and I encourage everyone to stop by and say hello to them, but so far, it looks like it's going very well. And then, the second item under new business, we have one housekeeping item that we need to take care of tonight, that didn't make the agenda. Every year, we renew our agreement with Farmington Bank, which is the main bank that the City of Bristol uses. So I'd like to ask that a council member make the motion to approve the Municipal Banking Services Master Agreement, City of Bristol, Connecticut, between the City of Bristol and Farmington Bank, and authorize the mayor, the city clerk, the corporation council, and the treasurer to execute the agreement.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion on the motion to renew the agreement with Farmington Bank? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Any other new business, starting on my left?
None.
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 Okay, we're up to resignations.
There are eight resignations, Your Honor. The first resignation is from John Hartman, from the Commission on Aging. The second is from Lisa Demato, from the School Readiness Council. The third is from Natalie Barrett, from the Commission on Aging. The next one is from James Brown, from the Board of Water Commissioners, and he also submitted his resignation from the Building Code Board of Appeals. The next one is Gabriel Galinas, or Galinas, from the Mayor's Task Force on HIV/AIDS, and Robert Smith, from the Commission for Persons with Disabilities, and last but not least, James Albert, from the Zoning Commission.
Is there a motion to accept the resignations and send letters of thanks?
Move to accept.
Second. Discussion on the motion. Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Okay, so now we're up to appointments, and there are several for tonight. We will start with the Commission on Aging, to appoint Christine Lee to replace John Hartman, resigned, an unexpired term to March of 2021.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. The next one is the Mayor's Task Force on AIDS, to reappoint Jessica Payne, no term. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. The next one is the Building Code Board of Appeals. The appointee is required to have 10 years of experience in construction design, construction supervision, or building construction, and I'm putting forward the name of John Lotovico to replace James Brown, resigned, unexpired term to August of 2021.
So moved. Second.
Discussion on the motion. Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. For the Commission for Persons with Disabilities, to appoint Tracy Beeland to replace Robert Smith, resigned, an unexpired term to June of 2020.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion on the motion. Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. The Inland Wetlands Commission, which is a mayor's appointment not requiring a vote. I'm appointing Tammy Kelly to replace Sebastian Panietto as an alternate member, since Mr. Panietto was appointed a regular member. Her term will go to January of 2021. Northwest Connecticut Convention and Visitors Bureau to reappoint Louise Aldemar, a three-year term, to September of 2021.
Move it.
Second.
Discussion on the motion. Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. For the Board of Water Commissioners, I'm asking to appoint Sean Dunn to replace John James Brown, who has resigned. It's an unexpired term to December of 19. And the reason I'm doing this, for those of you who may be familiar with Commissioner Dunn, he also currently serves on the Board of Public Works, and will be integral in putting together the Sewer and Water Commission issues, if in fact it passes charter revision, since he chairs both subdivisions, and has been a previous water commissioner.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion on the motion. Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. For the Youth Commission, I'm appointing Lance Washington to replace Barbara Callahan, who has resigned. It is an unexpired term to June of 2019.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion on the motion. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. On the Zoning Commission, to appoint Mike Mazzarelli to replace Jim Albert, who has resigned, for the remainder of the term to June of 2019. Commissioner Mazzarelli currently serves as an alternate member.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion on the motion. Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. And the second motion is to appoint Thomas Mara to replace Mike Mazzarelli as an alternate member. This term goes till June of 2020.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion on the motion. Hearing none, all in favor? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. So, to date, we have the following vacancies still. The Commission on Aging has a vacancy. We have space on the Hoppers Birch Pond Committee. We have a new Energy Commission, so anybody interested in serving on that, we're going to have three members serving for three-year terms, two members for two-year terms, and two members for a one-year term, based on the ordinance that just went into effect. We have a vacancy on the School Readiness Council that is reserved for a grandparent that is caring for children. We are also still putting together names and struggling with party balance for the Diversity Council. We currently have Mohamed Aziz, Laura Minor, Marang Danish, and Denise Miller, interested in serving, as well as Sandy Bogdansky. I have two other members whose party affiliations are not known to me, and I am looking for two others that need to be either unaffiliated or Republican members of that party in order to serve on the Diversity Council. So once we have that parity executed, we'll be naming that council for the October meeting. So if anybody's interested in these vacancies, they're just being considered for any board vacancies that are coming up in the near future, because they do change every month, and as you could see tonight, we had actually three members of boards need to resign due to change of residencies. So they do tend to come up just outside of term limits as well. You can send your resume or letter or email of interest to the mayor's office, and we put it in a file, and as vacancies occur, we check that first and then let people know what we have available. Therese, do you want to take it from here for Agenda Item 11?
Certainly. Authorization for Mayor or Acting Mayor to execute contract amendment with Schultz Corporation to increase amount by $84,474.99 for Contract 2C18-1, roadway construction at Center Square for additional work related to the installation of gas main and disposal of additional contaminated soil.
Is there... There's a motion, is there a second?
Second.
Discussion on the motion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Next item is a Ward of Contract 2P18-64B, Architectural Engineering Services Relative to Renovations at Memorial Boulevard School, to Quiz and Barrier Kerry Malik LLC for $1,985,000, with referral to Corporation Council and authorization for Mayor or Acting Mayor to execute.
I move.
Second.
Discussion on the motion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
And Item 13 is the approval of City of Bristol, Connecticut Tax Increment Financing Downtown Bristol TIF District Master Plan dated September 11, 2018.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion on the motion?
Your Honor, I just wanted to say something partly in response to our public participation questions. By approving this master plan tonight, we're not approving any specific tax break to anyone. In other words, this is a plan so that folks can apply to be in this program, so I just want to make that clear to anyone that's concerned about the fact that we're giving somebody tax breaks and putting that money in a special pot and spending it. There isn't any money in the pot yet, there isn't even a project in the TIF master plan. The TIF master plan is just a tool that we may or may not be able to use, depending on projects that come along. So I just want folks to realize that, and hopefully, when we do have a project coming forward that wants to be included in this, we will have meetings so folks can understand specifically what it's going to mean for that project and for how much money it would bring or be kept in a fund for the city. So, just so everyone understands that.
We do have with us tonight Justin Malley, our Executive Director from our BDA, and we have Attorney Adriana for the TIF legal piece that we did. Do either of you want to give the five-cent version of what TIF is one more time?
And even if you don't want to, would you be willing to come up?
It just wouldn't be right. So, TIF, it's hard to boil down, but essentially what TIF is, is we're going to set the valuation for the TIF district. You create a TIF district within the community, and then the incremental tax increases on real property, on buildings within that district, starting this fiscal year, or this tax year, will be, 75% of those increases will be set aside for reinvestment back into the district, right? So the district in Bristol is Census Track 4061. All the amount of taxes that are going to the general fund now within that district, based on the current value of property in the district, that those are going to continue to go to the general fund, just as usual. Any increases, right, in the taxes associated with real property in the district in the future, 75% of those are going to be set aside for municipal projects, whether it's streetscape work, acquiring blighted buildings and demolishing them, new roadways, utilities, all that sorts of good things. Maintenance on streetscapes, too, is important. I think about that often when I drive around. But also, we'll have the ability for the right projects to work with on commercial development and to assist in some of those projects, if it makes sense, from the policymaker's perspective.
Right. And so, if I could just give one example, again, there could be lots of different possibilities here. But for instance, on Center Square, the remainder of Center Square that the city owns, that the hospital is not involved in, basically, we're getting zero taxes right now on that property. So if someone wanted to do a project there, it would be that increased taxes that possibly would be going to this special fund.
Right.
And right now, there's zero.
There's zero on that property.
So it's not like money is going to be diverted from the general fund, shall we say. It's going to be some additional revenue won't be going to the general fund.
That's what it is.
I mean, just, again, to be clear. Thank you.
Through the chair. Oh, I'm sorry, you finished?
Mm-hmm.
You know, you want to be finished, don't you? You know, Attorney Adriana's here, and he wrote the statute in Connecticut. He represented us in this project. We started TIF a couple of years ago, actually. So the work you did in the BDA Board, I think, is commendable. And it's a very... What we've got to really stress going forward is, as Tom mentioned, and when he began his remarks, he doesn't completely understand it. I had a discussion with one of your BDA Board members after our last meeting. It's clear to me that there's a little fuzzy on it, so we've got to really do a good job explaining a very complicated issue and boil it down the best way we can so that it's more easily understood, because there's still people out there who don't understand it, and it's too important to let that happen.
It's going to be the kind of program that, as we, as Councilwoman Fordyear pointed out, as opportunities come up for investment in the district, we're going to be going, you know, there are going to be several public meetings solicited with each of those. We actually are required to report out once a year, either way, on TIF and how we're doing with TIF. So it's going to be a situation where the projects are going to help to define what TIF is and whether policymakers have the appetite for projects. I was at Board of Finance two weeks ago, one or two weeks ago. I think it was videotaped, but I did do a bit of a, sort of a nuts and bolts, kind of down and dirty, presentation on TIF. I'm going to try to get a hold of that, just so we can continue to educate the public about what TIF is.
Good job.
Justin, can I ask you a question? Do you think a major resistance to TIF might be fear of the unknown and just afraid that it's going to result in extra cost to the taxpayers? Would that be a fair statement?
Resistance is such a strong term. I think it's just...
Or perhaps apprehension.
I think that when you use the term "tax" in almost anything, people get their guard up a little bit. And so, we've learned, as you just mentioned, it's a project, it's very hard to boil down in just a five-minute discussion, but essentially, we are, there are no new taxes going on here. We are going to continue to evaluate property the same way that we always do. It's just that we're insuring, we're taking a piece of tax revenue from an area, and we're ensuring that that revenue can be reinvested back into that area, right? We've seen too many instances, I think, you know, again, I walk around the streetscape in the West End, and I think, there's an investment here that's needed, right? There's, maintenance may not have occurred there over years. TIF is a way, it's a planning tool, if nothing else, right? It's a way that we can get together as a group and plan how that, if there is additional revenue in the account, we could plan how we can reinvest back into the area. Because we all know Downtown is one of our oldest housing stock areas. The area itself is just in need of more investment, sometimes in other areas in the city, so that TIF is there to help a little bit. I come to the mayor with crazy ideas pretty often, and oftentimes, they're just bad ideas, but sometimes, it's funding. So that's a good idea, but where's the funding come from? Well, TIF may be an answer for that.
Well, and it keeps being referred to as a tool in the toolbox. Would it be fair to refer to it as a specialized tool? Something that's not going to necessarily be implemented frequently?
Yeah, I, it's going to be, we're required to report out once a year to this board and to other boards. Any instance in which TIF revenue is used, there are many, many checks and balances, right? It starts with, there's a staff team that gets put together, and it goes through the BDA, it goes through the City Council, the Board of Finance is involved, so there's a lot of checkpoints there. So it's a tool that is valuable only if it's used correctly, and that's why there are so many different stops along the way, just to have the master plan approved. I mean, there's been many stops here along the way, and that's how it should be.
Well, like any good program, it has to be run well. It has to be run right.
Right.
And you have to have an oversight committee with people who understand it, and whether you have a special committee or if you have your BDA Board do that, it's got to be run right. That was one of the criticisms, that a failure of plans in other states is because it hasn't been really been used effectively or run right. So we got, you know, it's like, anything we do, we got to do it well. The second thing is, you know, when we, you know, you and I, we did a lot of work on it, research on this, and talking with, you know, we're in competition with every town around us, and we're not getting enough action across the street, so we have to have as much as we can to develop the footprint in that census tract, and this is just, this will be helpful. Second thing is, you know, I talk to bankers, and what TIF does is, it makes a marginal project more favorable to a lender. And, I mean, you can't lose sight of some of those other third-party beneficiaries to this stuff, and I think that's going to play out very importantly as we go forward.
Yeah, I mean, I think that, again, it's about leveling the playing field within the city, right?
Exactly.
And from a development perspective. Middle Street, out near 229, Amazon's flourishing, right? That's an area that's not as difficult to develop in certain ways as Downtown is, so we want to be able to level that playing field. So in this case, TIF helps, we think.
Yeah, well, I mean, the technical details give it the verisimilitude that it needs, but it's our job to educate people on what this means, and I think the more people are comfortable with it and they understand it, the better off we're going to be.
Through the chair, again, I agree with that. I just think it's important to give as many examples as you can, you know, so that people get an idea of what projects might, you know, like the effect of a project, like a parking garage or something like that, you know, how would that work? Why would that be beneficial? There's plenty of examples, but maybe just add, you know, have someone, you're giving that explanation.
Mm-hmm. Thank you.
So, anything else down on this end? With no further comments, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. I'm now going to, as we ask Corporation Council to come up to tell us who's coming into our one, two, three, four executive sessions, can I just ask the indulgence to go back to unfinished business? And what is the read on the council for this opioid op-ed piece?
Mayor, do we need council approval if we were to do this letter? The reason I'm asking is, I'm wondering if we could refer that to the opioid task force, just to see if they have thoughts on it?
Well, it's a time...
Since it's tomorrow night.
We need to get approval by the 14th, and no, I don't think we need council approval, but I'm not comfortable signing something without the council weighing in on it, and especially since I'm prejudiced against it because of my previous work experience.
I think just in terms of the content, it was a little fluffy to me. Like, I don't think it had a lot of substance to it, so I don't know the value of attaching our name to it. I didn't really see it personally, but...
And I also don't think it's very Bristol-specific at all. You know, it doesn't, it's not something that I see impacting Bristol in a big way. But again, I was just suggesting that if the opioid task force was in favor of it, they might give us reasons that they are.
I can bring it to them tomorrow night. That does give us enough time if they choose to, and I can just let all of you know what their thoughts are. Okay. Thank you. Corporation Council.
Okay, thank you. All right, for 14, Executive Session Regarding Litigation Matter of William Dodge versus Officer Scott Verello. Going in will be Assistant Corporation Counsel Lacy and Police Chief Gould and myself. The next one, Executive Session Regarding Litigation Matter of Noel Bates versus City of Bristol. Going in will be Attorney Kenneth R. Plumb. He is with the firm of Metzger, Lazarek, and Plumb, and myself. Let's see, the 16, Executive Session Regarding Personal Matter of Roger Spear, Risk Manager, that will be the Acting Director of Personnel, Linda Emilia, and myself. Executive Session to Discuss the Proposal to Relocate City Hall to 10 Main Street, Number 17. Assistant Corporation Counsels Lacy Conlon and Stieg, Comptroller Diane Waldron, Purchasing Agent Roger Rousseau, and myself. I don't see, I did check with the assessor, and he thought, you know, he didn't have much in this particular session.
Okay.
All right, I think that covers it.
Is there any particular order that you want to take them in, or are they good the way they're listed in terms of the special guests that we have with us tonight?
Yeah, yeah, well, let's do, I think that 14 and 16 can be rather quick.
Okay.
All right, so why don't we do William Dodge and the Roger Spear one, 14 and 16.
Okay. So is there a motion to go into Executive Session?
So moved.
Second.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Okay, I'd like to ask for a motion to reconvene into public session.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Please let the record reflect that no votes were taken in Executive Session on any of the matters before us. At this point, I'll ask the members of the council, are there any motions to come forward on any of the items?
There is, Your Honor, on Item 16. I hereby move that the City of Bristol enter into an employment separation agreement with Roger Spear, a city employee, per the attached document, and that the mayor, Ellen A. Zapusasu, or Acting Mayor, be authorized to sign said separation agreement. I further move that this matter be referred to the Board of Finance and the Pension Board for any necessary action.
Is there a second? Discussion on the motion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Do any other council members have anything? In the matter of Agenda Item 17, regarding the proposal to relocate City Hall to 10 Main Street, I have a series of recommendations that I'd like to have someone put in the form of a motion. I believe there are five. So the first one would be that this matter be referred to the Board of Finance for their debt capacity review.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion on the motion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. The second motion that I'd like someone to move would be the referral of this matter The second motion that I'd like someone to move would be the referral of this matter to the 10-Year Capital Improvement and Strategic Planning Committee to discuss how it fits into the 10-Year Capital Plan, as well as the cost-benefit analysis of the various options presented.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. The next I'd like someone to move would be the offer direction to the purchasing agent to go forward and ask for clarification of 10 Main and South LLC on 111 North Main Street.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion on the motion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.